Okay, if I can have your attention please, we'll call to order the of the town board meeting for Dandian yard on June 30th. Please raise your flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will have an input of silence for those individuals that have passed out of birth at town of Fortin. And then we only have one. There was Ari Milton, little Pat Mills, Yolanda Fordy, right across from the the board's desk, and she passed on May 28. So we've got a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, roll double for the regular meeting and approve the meeting agenda. We have a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mike, basically, I have a second, George Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Close. Carry. Accept the minutes for the verbatim warning before May 9th of 2022. You have a motion for that?
Make that motion.
That being makes it correction, second tip. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Close. Carry. Authorized payments are built. You have a motion for that? George moves it.
I'll second.
Second by Mike. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Close. Carry. Public comment, is there anything the public that may comment, they'd like to make this point? Okay. So we'll move on to the reports from the town officials and committees. The headlock dam has been fully repaired just one time. That project took a little bit longer because of the rain and some of the additional cracks that they found in the dam when we started cleaning off. And with the room on the top of it, they caused the cracks and whatever happened. It's still the moss and the other stuff that was there. The ball patrol on the headlock, we've wrestled with that at the county for the last year, year and a half, trying to get it put together. It's not just for the headlock, it's where all the other lakes within the county. So they're putting a record script for that. But then here up there, we had, I know some residents up there that that made a couple calls to check on them. John, thank you for that. The weight ball, as I mentioned here, the meeting, we did have an issue with the weight ball, at least though they have, I don't know. We did have the attorney draft up a letter and sent to them because the way that the inspection report was written up by Haley Oliver, it specifically said that. While they couldn't see the erosion as a result of the weight ball, the, uh, the dam was not designed to capture, take the abundance of the waves by the weight ball, it was designed for the wind, uh, wind waves. And so, I know while they grew up on the lake, I know that they shared that with me to talk to as well. But I haven't heard anything back from, uh, any of the residents of both. So I don't know if that's a good sign or a bad sign, but we haven't heard anything there. Well, to what your issue here, with somebody who says we had a meeting earlier with the last meeting, that we were going to have a reservation. She moved out to a bigger, better place, and we're happy for her, but she didn't just go send us a case to her. I would like to move it over to the town board. Governors, I'm starting with that.
Um, I'm curious, is there any people in the county doing anything as far as rain through the bricks and all? I've never seen any of this bad, and it's absolutely ridiculous, I hope. Figure that people should be putting, taking something around the trees and various spraying. But when you own fifty acres, there's a lot of trees that you can't take home and trees. That's what it doesn't help. But they are terrible this year.
We can check them. I don't know. The weather, Mike, travel looks like confetti's been poured all over.
Oh, it's really ridiculous. And I just have a question for Mark.
Yep.
Um, there's a lot of construction on our boat, and I don't see any signs out, you know, there's supposed to post when they have a permit. I don't see one sign outside anybody has come in. Have you been over that, related to the Japanese thing?
Well, it's been a couple weeks since I've been over there.
I know there's a house being built, there's a garage that was just built last month.
Yeah, there were a couple permits over there.
There is.
Yeah. And they are supposed to post it.
I know this.
But now he tells them, when he, he and Elbow's posted it.
It would say having a search, if, you know, people put those hindels. Those sort of things. Okay, I was just wondering if you were aware that the whole lot of construction around there. My turn.
Michael?
Uh, another thing I got, I got a question from Mark also. Uh, so pretending to, if someone wants to park a camper that doesn't belong to them on their property today, um, it's, if, the person that asked me this, they want to park a camper on their property, and people that come and work, like, on parks or on agriculture, or during agricultural season, want to stay in that camper on their property? What is, what would they have to do for that?
Do a variance or a planning board. Okay. First off, they don't, the way the law is written, the way I interpret it, is that if it's gonna be a trailer on your property, you, you should be the owner. For storage or whatever, plus you can't stay in it anyways, because the law sends a right thing, and that's what the variance is for. Like, um, the board has done it before for somebody building a house or whatever.
Yep.
That issue that you're talking about is one of the rising issues. What can they do for the transient workers, that kind of thing? And the answer is they're supposed to have proper housing. As far as I know, through the immigration department, you're supposed to have an apartment or a house, it's not supposed to be a temporary housing, so. Well, they may, they may be dropping their requirements.
Right, yeah, and that's what, supposedly, it's through some, I don't know if it's through a coalition or some group that, women of the county, um, that's one of the things that's being brought up and kind of questioning. The person that asked me, that's what, kind of what they want to do. So I, I pointed them in the direction of the planning board to start with, um, and, and drove from there. So we'll see if they hear that and go that way. So.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Okay, thank you, George.
Yes, Saturday, I attended a Zoom meeting with the, the headlock association. They pretty much were working on their annual meeting in July. Also, the harvester is on the pond. Dave and Boop did a test and it just floored the cutter bar on the north end, which is five feet. So they figured this week or next week, they'll take another look at it, because the weeds have not grown great yet. They're there by no means, you can't reach.
Okay, that's it. Thanks, George. Gretchen?
Uh, with the office of the agent, on, on June 7th, the seniors of the year will be honored, and one of the honorees is our own Dale Cornell from Fortin. And the other one is Debbie, uh, Behem from Hudson Falls. They will be honored at the county building at the, uh, the, uh, at 10 a.m. at the, at, at your.
The wealthy board is working.
Okay, so if anybody can go, it'd be nice. Uh, it's building B in the board chambers, I believe. 10 a.m. on Friday.
Correct.
On July 22nd, there'll be a seniors picnic held at the Washington County Fairgrounds in Easton from 10 to 2. It's open for adults ages 60 and above. Uh, you should, I'll have an announcement up on the board where you can call and get reservations. It's like a $5 fee if you wish to pay, you don't even have to. Also, I'm going to have on the bulletin board information for protective services dealing with the, with adults. If there's any problem with abuse or whatnot, you can find out who to call and what to do. I don't know if anybody gets the newspaper Community Connections, but it's an adult newspaper. If you want to get it, let me know. Make sure the county has your address. It has a lot of information for, um, adults and a lot of medical information and all kinds of good stuff, so. It's here if you want it. As far as the bike trail goes, it's being used. Uh, a lot of people have mentioned how they walk it and bike it and whatnot. Um, I've got some pamphlets that I'm gonna keep here where you can use your phone and get onto this little, I don't, I'm not computer literate, but you can find out information with your phone, okay? On different things that are available in Washington County along the bike route. It's very interesting. I'm gonna try to get more so that I can have them down at the canal park. Another one is explore the, it's a visitor's guide for Washington County activities along the trail, and I'm gonna have a lot of these down at the, at the park, so they'll be available. The beach is gonna open, hopefully, the graduation weekend. We still need lifeguards. We don't have any. Well, we've got one, me. Um, and so if I cannot be there, I'm gonna have a sign, beach clothes, no swimming. So if you know of anybody who wants to be a lifeguard, uh, let me know or have them give a talk with me, I will train them. Because I want that beach open, and I'm sure people do too, so. There are times that I will not be able to be, to be there, I just can't. That's it?
Gretchen?
I forgot one thing.
Sure.
Um, does anybody know when they're gonna put the kayak launch back in? I see they put the, the regular launches in, but they didn't put the kayak launch back in. And I know people took it out last year, as far as I know, they stored it, because it wasn't stored down there where it normally is.
They were supposed to be fixing it. They were supposed to be fixing it. I can count, I'll check on it.
There's a lot of people kayaking this year. They don't look very safe putting kayaks in without that.
I'll check on it for you. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay, Barbara, let's keep the purpose tonight.
That's fine, yeah.
Go to one highway superintendent. Paul?
Well, I'm busy doing cemeteries this year, all the dam. Running our second trip on the cemeteries since Memorial Day. Going road sides, breaking the dirt roads, getting our roads ready for blacktop. Nicholson Road from 149 to County Route 16. Got one color about to change here. We're gonna do a stretch on Green Pond Road, and we're gonna go tri-pole to the town line.
Very good. What do you expect that to start?
I would say the pagan pedal will start to harvest.
Great.
After the calls change, what happens?
Barbara, please, enforcement officer.
Yes. You got my report. I understand you want me to give you more information.
Yes.
Certainly take your direction or whatever you'd like, and, uh, as you understand, every, every year almost we change what, what you want or whatever, and I certainly will do whatever you would like.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think what we're looking for is a little more clarity on, uh, on some of the buildings.
Well, I could, I could make a second sheet, and I could list, you know, um, what, I can do the name, the address, and then the actual building or whatever they're doing, and the, you know, I'll make, make it two different columns, like the LRCC 1, which is the beginning of the permit, and the LRCC 2, where it's the end of the project, you know?
Okay.
Something like that, exactly, that that would be wanted.
Yeah, and you're thinking we have the follow-ups. Sometimes people call and say, well, Marshall was the follow-up, because we haven't seen him, and we just didn't know, we say, well, he was there.
The other one is, I did get a call from Erin, her name is Erin Tida, New York State Canal Corporation. And, uh, they asked me, she asked me all kinds of questions about Route 4 North and the, uh, transfer elevator for the, filling the barges. And they're in conversation with another person to possibly run that. Um, but they did ask me very specific questions, and it was, a lot of it was about what were the complaints from the board? So I referred to some of what Debbie has told me in the past, and, uh, all about the hours, you know, they're concerned about the hours, that it starts way early or it goes way late at night, and, uh, and just a lot of no ways. So she said, we're in negotiations, she goes, we can negotiate with them on some of that stuff, and hopefully, you know, I mean, we really have nothing to say to them, because they can do whatever they want, and we have no control over them, but.
Well, we can, we can try to intervene, and the ologists are susceptible to that type of stuff.
Right, and we, and, but it was good that she actually asked me, like, if that was an issue, and it was, you know, we know it was, so. So at least we got our input there, so.
So the other thing you may get, we get involved, is the Shapling Canal, they're starting to send out through information to the towns. Should you get it, do you need to get it to Paul, please? Because they're sending out to coal people, but it's the highway superintendent, it's our responsibility for the rolls, and there's, there's like a clean air now at the South Bay County, and that kind of stuff, so. I want you to make sure Paul gets hold it also, if you want to close their marketing stuff up. Uh, you know, there's, there's a process in there, we're gonna negotiate, where are you gonna fill out the rolls? I know we gotta talk about that, in places like they were, or better.
Yeah.
So, okay. I think that's it. Any more questions, Barbara?
You guys, you know, you can call me anytime, and, you know, if you don't get it, leave a message, um, and if it's, you know, leave me a question, then I can figure out the answer before I call you back, and, you know, I certainly will be back to you. Try always to return phone calls, so.
Hey, good luck. Okay, sir. Yeah, and I see nothing from the historic, I don't think she knew much about this, this past month. Old business under the, uh.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, um, we need to do a finding for a party over there. Oh, no, it's not on the agenda.
I'll tell you about this business right now before the old business, okay? Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Okay, check, checkbook balance and general fund. The highway fund has 152,512.80. Youth commission 5,195.04. Headlock Dam Project 240.109. Headlock Park District Fund 9,974.80. Solid Health District, we have 370.48, but than that. Trusted Agency Fund 2,190.98. And the Medical Reuniversity Fund 3,0214.26. Over under our night classes, our savings account balances, uh, in the general fund we have 1,130,797.58. The night class highway fund is 852,880.60. And the night class headlock park district is 210,840.94. And the low sap is, uh, zeroed out at this point in time. Okay, any questions, any emails?
No, and, uh, just before we go on, sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to touch on the, um, the dog control officer's report. So that didn't make the hit, did it?
Yeah, why don't we do that? I have a report for you, Mike, so why don't you read it?
Oh.
Sure.
Um, so, hi, this is a report for May of 2022 from the dog control officer. Uh, 516 received an email from a gentleman on Norman's Way looking for information out of the town leash laws. Um, she emailed him back with photos of the leash laws right out of the ordinance book that she uses for reference. I let him know that if he needed more info, he should call me. He responded back, he now had what he was looking for. Uh, 518, a call was received from an individual on Route 40. She reported a repeated issue with her neighbor's dog coming to her house. The dog is friendly, but it is upsetting her young dog. She phoned the dog's owner, um, Chatham Road, and spoke to him. He assured her that he would try to do better to contain the dog. Um, the officer also sent out a letter to back up the phone conversation, uh, but she relayed back to the original complainant, and he was aware of the issue and will take steps to correct it. Uh, 527, a call was, or excuse me, an email was received from Washington County Public Health regarding a dog bite that took place on 521. Incident happened on Carts Ear Lane, when a county health worker was visiting a home of two individuals. The dog was reportedly a 15-year-old blind bass at home. 45, that's old. Um, she will complete the 10-day paperwork and submit it to the county health. Um, at Barbara's request, she mailed extra business cards to her office to be handed out, so apparently people are looking for, for her information to get over. Um, and as of that, she had no mouths that was driven for the month, and she said everything was, it would be handled by phone or email. So that's all she's got.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Uh, Barbara, town clerk.
A check was, uh, is going to be actually given to the town for 448 dollars and 38 cents for the period of May 1st to May 31st. Uh, this is an area where we are training the deputy town clerk, assumed to be the town clerk, Miranda Harenshaw, or anybody who hasn't met her yet. And we started working together, I think it was April 28th. She's doing very, very well, and, um, I'm sure everybody's gonna give her a big warm welcome, because, uh, she is doing a fantastic job. She's very, very smart and, uh, very capable of, um, handling all the town events and everything that happens in the community. She's very well receptive and very personable, so I feel like I'm leaving the town in good hands with Miranda.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. I, I'd just like to say that, you know, Barbara's served this, this community well, over tenure as a town clerk. Uh, we appreciate all you've done, Barbara, to make this a smooth transition, we appreciate that as well.
You're welcome.
Yep, so, Miranda, you had a duff. Thanks a lot, Bea.
It's nice to meet everyone, and I look forward to working with you all, so thank you very much.
So, as you move to the old business, the section of the local law, we showed your rentals, and law, law, maybe the town of Fortin, the second play review. Hopefully, the first and second week of, uh, the July timeframe, we're gonna start moving emails, and, uh, we'll have some information to put out to actually move it out. Uh, I see Queensberry has, uh, had some things, may have worked or may not have worked according to paper today, um, and that's kind of what we're waiting for, not just for Queensberry, but for some of the other, the other towns of theirs, because there's no sense in putting something in place, it's not gonna be enforceable, if it's not gonna be beneficial to the, to the town, and if you learn by other people's mistakes, that's a good thing, right? Have to go through the process two or three times. So I think we're at that point now, we've got enough information, we can start moving in a sensible direction. Uh, new business, which is, uh, partly old business, because you already started on it. Matt, would you like to talk about the, uh, the grant?
Sure. So.
Hi, Mr.
I think a couple months ago, we were here, and we had a demonstration from, uh, our engineers, who did a preliminary study and gave us some drawings. Um, when that was completed, we agreed the law to bid for the engineering of the actual building. So the engineering came back, we did all the legal stuff, we went out to bid, there was five bids, um, ranging from 470,000 the lowest to 795, the highest. The 795 was kind of an outlier, the rest were real close. I got the numbers right here, I think with the exact numbers of the five. 470 was the lowest, uh, 470, 925 was the second lowest, um, 496,700 dollars was the third, uh, 566, 810 was the fourth, and the fifth one was actually 749,000. So out of those five, I interviewed them, and, uh, because it was a proposal, not a bid, you can accept, uh, you know, anyone if you have criteria, so we graded them, and the, the lowest bid was plenty competent to do the work, and with all the interviews, they asked everything, you know, they answered everything correctly. Uh, the highest bid, they were just from part of their way, threw a number out, but the other four were way close, and that was actually the estimate, I think, in the original engineering, they were just like 465, 469, something to that, so it was close. Um, so tonight, I guess the next step, we've, uh, dug, molded over at the county, we're good with it, they've taken my recommendation, which I do have the, um, all five here, for anybody that wants to look through them. A lot of reading, I mean, it takes weeks to digest everything that's in there, but it's engineering talk, so a lot of it is just, this is the projects we've done, uh, you know, these are the things that have been passed, but enough of most of it are only a few pages, so you're welcome to look at that. But for tonight, we'd like to move forward, so we'd like a commitment from the town of Fortin, the county, to move forward with this project, and that's a couple, three things. Uh, the first thing being to accept the bid, you know, to accept the proposal, which is developed, and that for 470,000. So that would be accepting it, that would get us the legal New York State purchasing stuff to be able to sign a contract with them. The second thing is, uh, a small agreement, an MOU which Jeff has, he's reviewed, uh, making sure it would do however much he needs to. The county's reviewed it, and, and we're okay with it, and that's just a understanding that if we enter into this agreement, this is enough money at 470,000 for the engineering, that we're gonna go forward with the project. That saves you and saves us from somebody backing out after we've already spent that much money and getting it blacktop, you know, so it's just a basic agreement, saying we're good with the partnership, and there's details in there which Jeff can share with you.
I think what the other part, to, to mention that, is the fact that if this comes asking out before, then we just made it going through, all those people to blow out, and it's not trying to do it.
So there is other stops, you know, it is an agreement between us to work together, but there is other stops. We don't have to accept the bids. If, if construction prices go up more than what the estimated, uh, you know, costs were with the budgets for their first study are, there is a point where if we don't accept the bids, then, you know, you would go back out the bid, or you might wait and, and try a different, or, you know, a different time, or you might have to regroup a little bit, but, so it's not a, it's a pretty much all-in, but it's not, it's not an end-all. And I think the third one is just simple, and that's just a resolution that we need to apply for the, um, LGE grant, which is 200,000 per, uh, entity, so the town would get 20,000, we'd get 200,000. For, for the grant writing process, we need a resolution from the town, you know, giving the okay to go ahead, and I think Jeff also has the wording for that, so. You can ask me questions about the building, or this and that, the legal end of it, I'll leave it to Jeff, he has a contractor, and, uh, you know, as far as the county, you know, Sam's here, and I can answer whatever questions, so.
All right, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Are you ready for them? Do you want Miranda to read them?
How you want to do it, Mike. As long as you're with the ones.
Do you have your copies?
Are you?
Okay. All right. So Resolution Number 65 of 2022, resolution authorizing the annual agreement between the Board of Education of the Fortin Central School District and the Town of Fortin. Resolve, the town board hereby authorizes and directs the town supervisor to sign the annual agreement between the Town of Fortin and the Fortin Central School, and accordance here with a copy, which shall be filed in the town clerk's office.
We have a motion for 65.
I'll make that motion.
Move it, Michael, the second. Gretchen, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Close. Carry.
Resolution Number 66 of 2022, resolution authorizing hiring of seasonal employees to work for Headlock Park District. Now therefore be resolved, the town board and the town of Fortin authorizes and directs the hiring of the above positions to work for the Lake Headlock Park District on a seasonal basis, effective on or about June 1st, 2022, to be paid at the above hourly wages, and subject to the town successfully completing background checks, as well as drug and/or alcohol screening for MEOs and chief mechanical harvester operator, and be a further resolved that the town board and the town of Fortin authorizes and directs the town supervisor and/or clerk to the supervisor to complete any forms and take any action necessary to effectuate the terms of this resolution.
We have a motion to move that. George, we have a second.
I'll second.
Michael, is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Close. Carry.
Resolution Number 67, 2022, resolution accepting letter of reservation from Deputy Town Clerk Michelle Stark for the Town of Fortin. Now therefore be it resolved, that the town board and the town of Fortin hereby access the letter of reservation from Michelle Stark, effective May 23rd, 2022, close of business day.
We have a motion to move that.
I'll make that motion.
Move it then, we have a second. Second. You look at the, the.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All favor, aye, aye, closed, carry.
Sam?
Yes.
I've got a question on the last one.
Yes.
The labor is, the labor at fourteen, fifteen an hour?
Yes.
Would question per hour for a year longevity?
Did you remember what that was, Jeff?
It was supposed to either be twenty-five cents or fifty cents.
I think it was fifty cents. We ended on.
It was to be decided, play out the one, it was a requirement.
So only, then we still get the fifty cents to share? Mike, George, Gretchen.
How much?
Fifty cents.
I think fifty cents.
Yes, okay. And I will, I'm going to give the fifty cents to you, thank you, Gretchen, for taking that up. Okay, up to the next one, which is Michelle's. And did we vote on that?
We did, we got a motion from Dan and a second from George.
All, any discussion? All favor, aye, aye, closed, carry. Number sixty-eight?
Resolution number sixty-eight of twenty twenty-two. Resolution appointing registrar our vital statistics of the Town Board and. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Town Board and the Town Board and hereby appoint Jennifer Jackson as registrar our vital statistics of the Town Board and effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to serve until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion? Move that forward.
I'll make that motion.
Michael, we have a second?
We have a second.
Second by Jeff, is there any discussion? All favors, aye, aye, closed, carry.
Resolution number sixty-nine of twenty twenty-two. Resolution appointing the Town Clerk of the Town Board and. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Town Board and the Town Board and hereby appoints Miranda Lynn Herring Shaw as Town Clerk of the Town Board and effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to serve until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And be it further resolved, the Supervisor is hereby directed to notify the Washington County Board of Elections and take the requisite actions to ensure the Town Clerk position is placed on the ballot for the twenty twenty-two general election.
And this is the roll call, please.
Is that what your sixty-eight was?
We need a motion at it first. What is, what is your statement?
Um, yeah, so mine doesn't say that.
You want sixty-nine?
Mine's sixty, mine's, yeah, so I have sixty-nine as all the description was, it's something about order. Give me two seconds.
Sixty-eight was going to be the appointment of Miranda.
A registrar.
So I had sixty, oh, I'm sorry.
I had sixty-eight as resolution ratifying the appointment of the Deputy Town Clerk. And sixty-nine was a resolution authorizing the application of local government efficiency project.
Right, yeah. So something, either short or something, or.
Okay. All right, so, sixty-eight, you got, couple sixty-eight, can we do that one? Anybody want, Barbara?
I have resolution sixty-eight of appointing the registrar our vital statistics, are we going to keep it sixty-eight, or?
You can keep that at sixty-eight. The appointment of Miranda should be, as Deputy Town Clerk, should be before her being appointed as.
All right, so let's change Resolution appointing the Town Clerk of the Town Board and. Which one do you want, Jeff, you want?
The sixty-eight, the appointment of Miranda, she was Deputy Town Clerk.
Sorry, that is sixty-eight.
Okay.
Then Resolution appointing the Town Clerk will be after that, so technically it'd be sixty-nine. So, so we're going to do that one.
Right.
This one.
All right, so, okay, okay, we've got it, yeah, we've got it. Resolution number sixty-eight of twenty twenty-two. Resolution ratifying the appointment of the Deputy Town Clerk of the Town Board and setting her pace. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Town Board and the Town Board and hereby appoints and funds the appointment of Miranda Lynn Herring Shaw as Deputy Town Clerk of the Town Board and, effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. And be it further resolved, the Deputy Town Clerk shall be a full-time physician, receive an annual salary in the sum of thirty-six thousand, two thirty-six per year, pro-rated on a per-day basis for the course of her employment.
Do we have a?
I will, I'll make that motion.
Right, move it, George seconds it. We have Gretchen seconds it. Any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, well, is there a roll call? Sorry.
Yep, let's do a roll call. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sexton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hall?
Yes.
Okay, so now we are going to move on to which one is sixty-nine?
It doesn't matter anymore.
It doesn't matter anymore?
That was the only one you needed to do first. Well, the registrar's got the number now. Well, that was already sixty, sixty-nine is the Deputy.
Yeah, the number got out.
Okay, so let's do sixty-nine, Resolution appointing the registrar our vital statistics?
Sure.
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Town Board and the Town Board and hereby appoint Jennifer Jackson as registrar our vital statistics of the Town Board and, effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to serve until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a motion to move that?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, move it, you have a second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All favors, aye, aye, closed, carry.
And this will be Resolution number seventy of twenty twenty-two. Resolution appointing the Town Clerk of the Town Board and. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Town Board and the Town Board and hereby appoints Miranda Lynn Herring Shaw as Town Clerk of the Town Board and, effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to serve until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The Supervisor is hereby directed to notify the Washington County Board of Elections and take the requisite actions to ensure the Town Clerk position is placed on the ballot for twenty twenty-two.
We have a motion.
I will.
George?
Sure, George, I'll second.
Michael seconds it, is there any discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Closed, carry.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sexton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hall?
Yes.
Resolution authorizing application for local government efficiency project grant relative to the construction and use of a shared highway facility with Washington County. Sam, do you want the whole thing read, or just the resolve?
Let's do the, the resolves, I think you ever had that before you read it.
Yes.
Gretchen? You want seven?
This is seventy-one, Greg.
Yes, this is seventy-one. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Fordham Town Board hereby approves entering into an agreement for maintenance and construction of municipal highway facility with Washington County for the shared highway facility that will meet the needs of the Town Board and. And be it further resolved, upon final approval of the attorney for the town, the Supervisor is hereby authorized and empowered to execute the intermunicipal agreement with Washington County and take any additional actions necessary in furtherance thereof, and be it further resolved, that this resolution shall take effect immediately.
That resolution was titled, that resolution is to enter into the MOU with Washington County.
Okay, so Resolution authorizing, entering into an intermunicipal agreement with Washington County?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you have a motion to move that. George moves it, second.
I'll second.
Michael, you have two seconds. Is there any discussion? And I think that's a roll call, so.
Yes. Councilwoman Sexton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hall?
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-two of twenty twenty-two. Resolution to accept the proposal for engineering and design services relative to the construction and the use of a shared highway facility. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Fordham Town Board hereby accepts bid submitted by Lovella Associates for engineering and design services relative to the creation of building plans for the shared highway facility that will meet the needs of the Town Board and, subject to the concurrence approval by the Washington County Board of Supervisors. And be it further resolved, the Supervisor is hereby authorized, in concert with the county, to execute any agreement and take all necessary actions to retain Lovella Associates in accordance with this resolution, subject to final attorney approval.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Right, move it, you have a second.
Executive?
You have a second, is there any discussion? I think this is roll call, so.
Yes, Councilwoman Sexton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hall?
Yes.
I think that's the resolution.
Yes.
There's two more.
There were one, yeah, there's one.
The LGE one.
Yep.
The one that you titled, that holds around.
I thought this was a gift, correct?
There's two that have the same title. You did the one.
So seventy-two is Resolution to accept the proposal for engineering and design services relative to the construction and use of shared highway facility. And then the seventy-three, the Resolution authorizing application for local government.
The highway efficiency grant.
Resolution number seventy of twenty twenty-two. Authorizing the application for local government efficiency project grant relative to the construction and the use of a shared highway facility with Washington County. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Fordham Town Board hereby approves entering into an agreement for maintenance and construction of a municipal highway facility with Washington County for the shared highway facility that will meet the needs of the Town Board. Back it up, back it up. Good luck, girlfriend. Seventy-three of twenty twenty-two, let's try this again. Resolution authorizing application for local government efficiency project grant relative to the construction and the use of shared highway facility within Washington County. Whereas upon award, this grant will fund the construction of one shared highway barn to optimize the delivery of highway and maintenance services and identify ways to reduce costs. The project will achieve the goals addressed laid out in the Washington County Shared Regional Highway Operations Centers feasibility study, LGE, grant contract T one zero 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 nine one two, completed and closed out twenty twenty, and will fulfill the goals to improve efficiency, execute shared equipment possibilities, and reduce overall administrative expenses while reducing taxpayer burden. And whereas, a requirement of the grant is the contribution of matching funds paid by the municipality. Now therefore be it resolved, if the Fordham Town Board hereby affirms their partnership with Washington County for the shared highway barn and the goals laid out in the Washington County Shared Regional Highway Operations Centers feasibility study, and be it further resolved, if the Fordham Town Board hereby approves the application for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Local Government Efficiency and Facilitation Grant from the New York State Department of State, and be it further resolved, the Supervisor is hereby authorized and empowered to execute any and all applications, related materials, and take any such actions necessary for the timely submission of a complete grant application.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Michael makes it. Gretchen seconds it. Is there any discussion? See, now, it's going to be roll calls, please.
Councilman Sexton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark?
Councilwoman Stark?
Yes. Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilwoman Litherell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Hall?
Yes. Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize for the, to the public, for the confusion of the resolution, resolution tonight. It wasn't on that, he was a man, he was a man, he couldn't get up on our train, he was sick for three days, that's county. So we didn't get this stuff to wait this afternoon, he didn't start putting it together, so. That's why there was a little confusion on that. And I'd like the public to discuss it, because the public, I think the public, they should discuss.
I just want to say thank you too, Matt, for all the work you've done.
It's a big, it's a big plus. It's a big plus, we don't have to hire anybody additional or visible cost. This is all just absorbing the day-to-day operation of the county, so, we appreciate that. All right, if you've got the, I was to come for the public, I'll let you take a motion to a juror.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, for a second, Gretchen? And, yeah, second, that I agree, you're a juror.